Thank you for waking me up. Hey, Andy.
Yeah?
I want to be in my family reunion. They say they can hear me loudly.
Yeah, I can hear you too.
Okay, great.
The Roanoke City Council informal session for September the sixth, twenty twenty-two is hereby called to order, and I will ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Here.
Mr. Best pitch.
Here.
Mr. Cobb.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Price.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here, and we have a call on this president. Council meeting will be televised live and replayed on RBTV Channel Three on Thursdays at seven o'clock PM and Saturdays from ten AM to five o'clock PM, and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. Our items for action today, there's a communication from the mayor's office requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council pursuant to section two point two, dash thirty-seven eleven, Code of Virginia as amended, and a list of the current vacancies was included with the agenda that you all have. I need a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the motion passes. There's a communication from Vice Mayor Patricia Whiteboy, Chair of the City Council Personnel Committee, requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss a personnel matter being the annual performance of the council-appointed officers pursuant to section two point two, dash thirty-seven eleven, Code of Virginia as amended. I need a motion.
So moved, second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the motion passes, thank you. There's a communication from the city attorney requesting that council convene in a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to potential litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation or litigation posture of the public body pursuant to section two point two, dash thirty-seven eleven, Code of Virginia as amended. I need a motion.
So moved, second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the motion passes. There's a communication from the city attorney requesting that council convene in a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to section two point two, dash thirty-seven eleven, Code of Virginia as amended. Need a motion.
So moved, second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the motion passes. There's a communication from the city attorney requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss the disposition of publicly owned property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to section two point two, dash thirty-seven eleven, Code of Virginia as amended. I need a motion.
So moved, second.
All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the motion passes. Are there any items on the two PM council docket requiring discussion or clarification, and are there any additions or deletions? All right, hearing none. Are there any topics for discussion by the mayor and members of council? We have none, at least right now. So we will we will go into, we're scheduled to have a legislative meeting, we're just scheduled to start at nine AM, and we will come back, after the legislative meeting, we'll come back and take up the briefings. Madam Clerk, is that the?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right, so I'm pleased to recognize Councilman Best pitch, who's the chairman of the legislative committee.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and so we recessed the council meeting for the committee meeting, and we'll let the staff rearrange themselves a little bit here. And when you're ready, Ms. Cook, please call the roll.
Mayor Lee.
Here.
Mr. Best pitch.
Here.
Ms. Whiteboy.
Here.
Mr. Cobb.
Here.
Ms. Price.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Dr. Jamison. Mr. Kathy.
Here.
Dr. Jamison is not able to join us this morning due to her professional commitments, but I'm happy that Mr. Kathy's schedule was adjusted a little bit, I guess we'd say, so that he's able to be with us this morning along with Dr. Seabird from the school board. So, thank you all for joining us.
Does anybody need the handout?
I'm sorry?
Does anybody need the handout?
Oh, does anyone need a printed copy? You all got the electronic version, and I hope you spent most of Labor Day yesterday since you had the day off reviewing all that information.
I'd like to get a copy, I didn't spend that time reviewing it.
So we do have a very full agenda this morning, and we'll try to get through it as expeditiously as possible, but I do want everyone to to give us your input as we move through the agenda. And we'll start off, we also have Laura Bateman with us by Zoom, sorry, I forgot, and Laura, who is with you?
Good morning, everyone, I am here and joined by Kathy Burcher, who is the DANA's Senior Director of Legislative Affairs, who comes to the DANA strategies from the former gubernatorial administration where she was Deputy Secretary of Education. Kathy has some great skills that are going to be put to good use with the city of Roanoke this session.
Well, thank you, Kathy, your screen is kind of small on our screen, and I can't quite, can't quite see, but I appreciate Kathy, you being with us as well, thanks for joining us. So let's, let's start by just going over the program we had for last year.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to ask a question, are we going to have at any time the past minutes?
That's not on the agenda, Ms. Mayor.
I noticed it wasn't on the agenda.
That's not on the agenda for discussion.
Yeah, it hasn't been on the agenda for the last two times.
Yeah, that's not on the agenda.
And so I'm just asking, will we have them to be approved?
Yeah, let's stick to the agenda, please, if we could.
We can, but I just wanted to ask that question. That there normally is approval of minutes from the past meetings, and I noticed the last two times.
Excuse me, would you allow me to run the meeting?
Yes, sir, but I just wanted to ask the question, thank you.
Thank you, let's just stick to the agenda, thank you very much.
No problem.
I'm going to go through what we had as our policy statements very briefly. If anybody has any ideas about how we should change or modify any of these or anything else that we should include, or anything that you may think we don't need to include anymore, please let me know. Under fiscal policy, we've had this in for a while, I think, that any proposed comprehensive tax reform must be based on the fundamental principle that local revenue sources cannot be further limited or restricted by the General Assembly without the enactment of legislation that will authorize localities to establish meaningful and viable alternative sources of local revenue. I think that's something that has been discussed in various circles in Richmond for a long time, but it doesn't appear that there's too much momentum behind actually looking at the tax structure of the Commonwealth of Virginia in general, at both the state and federal, excuse me, both the state and local levels, and deciding if there's a better way to do things. And then, secondly, the General Assembly must vigilantly and effectively avoid enactment of any further unfunded mandates to localities and initiate procedures to review, assess, and eliminate existing and burdensome unfunded mandates imposed on localities. Unfunded mandates include mandatory tax exemptions or reductions to specific groups of individuals as worthy and deserving as they may be. Everybody okay with that? Under technology and infrastructure policy, the General Assembly should eliminate impediments facing localities from bringing twenty-first century technology to their citizens. Let me just ask Mr. Cow, if I could, at this point, is that something you think we need to continue? And if so, should we be a little bit more specific about what we mean by that? Because I think we may be ahead of the curve a little bit compared to a lot of the localities with broadband authority and other things that have happened.
And there's been such a heavy investment by the General Assembly and by the state overall in broadband. I do think updating that would make, make some sense. You know, for example, here, the issue is less about distribution or availability as much as it is cost. And so maybe there's some sort of structuring around that, with broadband in particular.
Okay, may I ask you to see if there, if you can come back to the next meeting with some proposed revision of that language? Commonwealth and the city must develop partnerships among federal, state, and local constituencies to expand highway infrastructure development throughout Virginia's Blue Ridge region, including the expansion of I-73, which incorporates improving the safety and economic development worthiness of US Route 220. I really don't know where that is, but I will, I would just say that my biggest concern about efforts to reduce or suspend the gasoline tax is because that's where this money goes, that's where all this money goes that we pay in gasoline tax every time we fill up our tanks. So without that funding stream for highway improvements and maintenance, I just don't know how much longer some of this is going to go on, especially as long as we've been talking about I-73. Anyone else? Environmental policy. The city opposes any efforts by the General Assembly to mandate further exemptions from payment of local stormwater utility fees. In addition, the city requests the General Assembly to hold localities harmless from any costs associated with increases in the load of sediment and other pollutants of concern that enter waters of the Commonwealth, including rivers, streams, and tributaries where such increases in the total maximum daily load for a locality are attributable to projects and developments approved by the Commonwealth that include crossing of bodies of water within the Commonwealth. Do we have a briefing coming up at some point on where we are with stormwater?
We will talk a little bit about certainly the CIP investments at the upcoming retreat. We don't otherwise have anything currently scheduled.
Well, I wonder if we could include in that what the, what the monitoring has shown us
Sure.
in terms of sediment pollution in the Roanoke River over the last few years. And, and of course, we, I think we all understand that that battle is probably continuing for some time to come. The city supports legislation to promote the generation and use of renewable energy, including expanding the authority of localities to enter into power purchase agreements with utilities for the generation of electricity through solar power. Any comment on that one, Mr.?
No, there's been some positive movement in that direction recently, so that could, I mean, the language is probably still relevant, whether or not we want to also acknowledge the steps that have been taken thus far might still be worth, worth doing.
So could we just change that to the city supports legislation to continue promoting?
Yeah, I think that would be, that would be good, and, you know, probably, and it may be covered elsewhere, but this also could be a possible area to introduce some additional language around the EV charging stations, that's been obviously a lot of conversation around renewables in the state, and the state is making that investment, but that may get covered elsewhere.
Okay, again, maybe you can suggest some wording at our, our next meeting. The city encourages socially responsible investments, including investments in renewable energy by VRS and all other funds invested by the Commonwealth. The city supports energy efficiency and renewable energy programs for public transportation services statewide, emphasizing the need for more equitable, accessible, and cleaner transportation options. And maybe that would be a good place to add a statement about EV. Economic development policy, the city encourages the General Assembly to maintain existing tools, including historic tax credits, to encourage development and redevelopment throughout the city and Virginia's Blue Ridge region. And I think, you know, we have some tools, we need to continue to maintain those tools, because I think sometimes there's some, some thought in certain quarters that maybe those are not really necessary. City supports continuation and increased funding for the Commonwealth's Opportunity Fund. This important economic development incentive program has played a major role in several Roanoke job creation projects. The COF is an essential tool in competing with other states which often offer lucrative incentive packages to prospective companies. And that, I think, since we're just talking about continuing. The city encourages the General Assembly to refrain from enacting further limitations on planning, development, and zoning tools that localities may use in regulating and promoting development within their communities. Public transportation is an important economic development tool for the regional economy. The General Assembly should increase funding for transit services and create opportunities for regional localities to collaborate in expanding public transportation throughout the region. Mr. Cobb?
Mr. Best pitch, I'm referring to the third paragraph, and this may be included, so if it is, comprehensively, that's great, but we've talked a lot recently about some of the restrictions and limitations we have on rehabilitating certain properties, whether it's residential or commercial, because of either a lack of zoning enforcement on a state level or giving localities more ability to enforce that at a local level. And so I'm wondering if, if that's something we should consider adding here, or if you believe that's included?
Well, I think we have some, some staff requests for legislation related to codes compliance, and we're going to be discussing that a little bit later in the agenda.
I think it would probably be, I think what we're proposing is more legislative action versus policy direction. The policy is probably pretty sound as it is, it really is the lack of some of the legislative tools, I think, will, but if we get into that discussion and ultimately find that it needs to reflect in policy as well, we certainly can come back and address that.
Yeah, let's, let's come back to that, if we could. All right, on education policy, City of Roanoke and Roanoke City Public Schools strongly urge the General Assembly to amend current school funding programs to fully fund its obligations under the standards of quality. Specifically, we seek a secure, sustainable state revenue source to assist localities and school divisions to fund two initiatives. School divisions needs evidence-based in-school tutoring to restore student learning loss. And secondly, to provide ongoing professional development and support for teachers and staff who must effectively deliver new curricula and instruction while exercising high staff who must effectively deliver new curricula and instruction while exercising high levels of cultural competency. These revenue streams would address post-pandemic learning conditions and the training of faculty and staff on new curricula and pedagogies resulting from the updated curricula approved in winter 2021 General Assembly session. This recommendation will require amendments to establish transparent criteria for equitable distribution of such funding, including funding to support the hiring of qualified tutors and the development and delivery of professional development opportunities needed to meet the standards of learning requirements. And we have a pretty extensive draft of the school board's policies and requests that were included in what was sent to you. I've asked Mr. Kathy and Dr. Seibert if we can come back for a more robust discussion of those items at our next meeting, since we have so much really to cover today. But be prepared in October, please look thoroughly through what they have drafted so far, and come back to our next meeting in October, prepared to have a really in-depth discussion of those issues, if we may.
As Mr. Best pitch, that dovetails with our, we haven't had any significant changes since that was put out to you. We've been focused on a positive start to the new school year, so it works out great for us.
Yeah, and thank you very much for focusing on that. I know it's been a tough time to get schools up and running again, and I think, once again, I think the City of Roanoke is kind of leading the way for a lot of other localities around the Commonwealth. Just a few more here. Public safety policy, the city supports legislation that preserves law and order and promotes public safety throughout the city, including legislative initiatives that provide funding to assist localities in protecting the public from gun violence. We have got some funding recently. We know that we're going to continue to need funding on an ongoing basis. So are you okay with keeping that just the way it is?
Yeah, every indication is that the state is going to continue to provide funding.
Yes.
So that's.
Also, we just want to continue to encourage and thank them for that. City supports legislation to enable localities to enact ordinances that exceed statewide standards with respect to the sale, possession, storage, and carrying of firearms and ammunition. Probably not as much support currently in Richmond for that one, but I think it's important enough that we need to keep pushing on that. City emphasizes the importance of continuous criminal justice reform and the establishment of appropriate standards for law enforcement to protect the civil rights of citizens. Further, the Commonwealth and city must expand the meaning of well-being and community safety to include education, economic opportunity, rehabilitation, and other support initiatives. The governor and General Assembly should ensure that additional funds are provided to sufficiently support these efforts alongside law enforcement. I'm going to ask Senator Edwards' office, if he would review that. Senator Edwards has been very involved with the Crime Commission and some of the things related to criminal justice reform. So I'm going to ask them for their input on that, if anybody has any other suggestions. Make a note of that.
Well, I would also ask here, we've talked about this at different occasions, but while overall, I think the criminal justice reform has been effective and helpful there, it has also created some limitations that directly impact the ability to make arrests in acts of gun violence or other acts of violence. And I'm wondering if as part of that, we could review or have law enforcement review that and see if we could address that in some way? The bail reform?
Yes, no, can you draft some wording on that, Joe, and bring it back to us in the next meeting?
Chairman, I'd like to put a little more on that, and the chief will be here this afternoon, and we can ask him a little bit about that.
Good idea. Good idea. Okay, civil and voting rights policy, the city supports repeal of Article I, Section 15A of the State Constitution regarding marriage. You know, this is one of those things that just really bewilders me, because it's not enforceable. Everybody knows it's not enforceable, but they don't seem to want to take action to change it. So I think we should continue. Maybe we just want to say the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia. Everyone okay with that? City emphasizes the importance of keeping constituents aware and informed on their civil rights and liberties, most especially their right to vote. Thus, the city supports all efforts at making voting as accessible and equitable as possible.
Well.
I don't want to get, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Well, we won't get into that, but I would say that we want to make sure that Adventis or their, somebody, you know, one of the representatives, contact our senator's office and our delegate to make sure that they have a strategy for our charter change, because they weren't present the last time, and I'm not sure why, but they certainly need to be there to advocate for this, because this is a simple housekeeping.
Yeah, this is a different one, and we'll come to that one in the program for last year. But yeah, I'm very interested in knowing what anyone thinks about who benefits from continuing to defeat that legislation and who is hurt if the legislation is approved. I mean, it just, again, that one makes.
It doesn't make any sense to me.
It's simply a housekeeping matter. It makes no sense to me either.
Well, I just want to make sure that they're engaged and that we won't be caught off guard this school round.
Thank you.
Get that done.
Yeah. Yeah, but we covered that. Community policy, the city supports measures to ensure statewide living wage that incorporates the value of benefits to promote the health and well-being of workers and their families. I think it's really important to keep that part in there about benefits, because $15 an hour, $17.50 an hour, or whatever, without any benefits, is still leaving people in a pretty bad situation. The city supports legislation to promote health care for all Virginians, including reproductive health care, free from discrimination based on sex, race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, or gender identity. We received some information by email regarding requests our position on that. Did everyone see that? If anybody thinks that we need to look at that more carefully and expand on this or further develop it, again, let's put that on the agenda for the next meeting. And lastly, the city supports legislation to address the health issues presented by vaping. You know, I noticed that more and more private businesses are including restrictions on vaping anywhere where there's no smoking, or not just where no smoking is required, such as in restaurants under Dakota, Virginia, but other businesses that just don't want anybody to smoke inside their business, and they're including vaping as part of that. As I said earlier, anybody have any comments or questions on any of those policy statements? Okay, as I said earlier, we're going to get into a more detailed discussion, but I wanted to give Mr. Kathy and Dr. Seibert the opportunity to address anything at a very high level that you think we really need to be paying attention to at this point. Mr. Kathy, would you come up to the podium and, so we can record your comments?
Yes, sir, and thank you for having us today. We very much appreciate it. As I told you, the positions that we presented you with, please do take a look at those when you get a chance, and we'll take them up at the next meeting. We are still working on additional positions, specifically efforts to support English learners, improve assessment and accountability, and so we're working on those issues. We're going to probably refine our position on truancy. There's some statewide assessments that are based on that, and we have some unique concerns about that that we want to address. Our superintendent is going to attend the superintendent's Legislative Conference on October 31st and November 1st, and that ought to be handy to kind of get a grip on statewide and national trends. Our board will attend the BSBA conference November 16 through 18, which will do the same for us. We hope that you'll please mark your calendars for our Take Your Legislature to School Month event, the morning of November 29th of 2022. This will be a coffee and conversation event. We haven't had a location yet, but judging on our convocation, we've got some real buy-in and participation by all of our local representatives. Real happy to see them all and our General Assembly folks. And anyway, we hope that you'll all get together, and Representative Klein has appeared as well.
You said November 29th. Do we have a time for that?
I don't, it's probably going to be at 8:00 a.m. is when it's been traditionally, based on my experience. We want, we're delighted to hear from our friends at Adventis today. We're delighted to collaborate with the city on retaining them to help us, so we'll have boots on the ground every day at the session. We appreciate recognition by Adventis that their services are in conjunction with existing RCPS legislative efforts. Dr. Seibert has hit the ground running with us and is already doing a phenomenal job of systematizing not only our constituent reply process, but also our legislative agenda. Unexpectedly, at least to me, but probably expectedly to anybody in the know, he was appointed to the Virginia Board of Education, which is a wonderful, wonderful boon for us, and to have our voice heard on the Virginia Board of Education. But at the same time, there are probably some times where he can't jump up when he's lobbying. So because of that, it's nice to have Adventis on board for that. But anyway, I will defer to Dr. Seibert again, who knows more in his little finger than I know in my whole body about all this stuff. And thank you all again for having us.
Thank you, Mr. Kathy. Dr. Seibert, anything you'd like to add to that at this point?
No, I just appreciate the opportunity to collaborate and the great relationship the School Division has with the City Council. And so we look forward, this is obviously a journey we're on. We do look at legislative advocacy as a 12-month process, and we have a 12-month calendar in place to guide our work moving forward. Been enjoying working with Mr. Spencer and your team, so we appreciate that. I have really enjoyed working with Kathy Bercher over the years and other roles, so I think her role with Adventis will be very good. I will share what I shared at the school board meeting last month, which was, I've received a lot of inquiries about my role on the State Board of Education, being, are you moving into Richmond? I'm like, goodness, no, this is two days a month, it's voluntary, non-compensated. So no, this is, my role in service is here at Roanoke City Public Schools, and I've enjoyed my tenure so far and the collaboration that we enjoy.
Yeah, that's interesting to me. I would think people would understand that it's important for all those state boards to have representation from around the Commonwealth, and not everybody who's in Richmond or needs to move to Richmond in order to be part of that. So thank you very much for your representation of our, not just the City of Roanoke, but I know, based on your prior experience, you're looking at the region, all of our school systems in Virginia's Blue Ridge, and we appreciate that. So let's look back at the 2022 session. We got a final report from Adventis back in July on the specific request that we had last year. And we'll start with the lean status and priority for unpaid local solid waste collection fees. And Adventis reported they were unable to find a patron for this legislation. I'd like to hear what people think, because we've had this for a few years, and it just doesn't seem to be gaining any traction. And my, I guess my perspective on this is that until a lot of other treasurers around the Commonwealth really get behind this and push their local delegations to support something like this, I just don't know that we're getting anywhere with this. So is this something we should keep just because it makes such good sense? This is about including solid waste collection fees on the bill for stormwater and real estate and applying the same penalties and interests for non-payment or late payment. Am I captioning that pretty correctly, Mr. Spencer? Right. So, I mean, it's just in terms of efficiency and operation of government, it makes so much sense. I really don't understand why there's an opposition, except that some people seem to think lean is such a four-letter word, that they don't want to hear it. So should we keep this in? What do we think? Mr. Cowe?
Mr. Best pitch, was this a recommendation that also was supported by the state treasurers? I'm remembering at some point Evelyn came to address this with us.
She did, and I think she has worked, you know, she was president of that association a couple of years back, and I think she's worked with them. But I have not seen it, and maybe I'm just not in that loop, but I just have not seen any strong advocacy as an association to push this forward. So should I talk with Ms. Powers about it?
Was she in favor of it?
What's that?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, she is the one who basically initiated this. I think Ms. Price.
The only thing I just happened to think of, you know, we got a lot of pushback when we first started talking about plastic bags and the elimination of such. In fact, we got laughed at. So I'm just bringing that up, because maybe this is one more item to be on the forefront, and even though it may not be getting traction right now.
I mean, I guess part of it, I'm not sure how many localities around the Commonwealth actually have a separate solid waste collection fee and how they deal with it. Do they put that on the same bill, or do they send out a separate bill for that? So let me discuss this with Ms. Powers, and I'll get back with you at our next meeting.
Well, I see Mr. Powers here, Jeffrey Powell. I wonder if he has any thoughts or comments on that.
Mr. Powell, thank you for being with us, and we're going to call on you in just a few minutes to talk about some other things, but love to hear your thoughts on this one.
Yes, I think we should continue to lean, because it is a tax. We do charge for it. We do provide this service, and citizens need to pay it.
Yeah. Okay. Anything further, Mr. Mayor? You good?
Mr. Mayor, anything further?
You're good with that?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I wanted to hear the thought. I had a chance to go down and speak with the folks last Thursday, I think it was, and talk to the workers that go out and do that.
Oh, yeah.
They were, of course, they're very anxious about certain things, but I'm just pleased with the commitment that they're making to get that done, and so, especially in the times we're having now with people not working, wanting to work, and leaving, and vacancies. So I was real pleased with that, and they had some strong questions, but at least we wanted to let them know that we're concerned and we're working with them on that. So thank you, thank you, Ms. Chapman. Thank you, Ms. Powers.
I just have a question, and you're saying, what about our delegation? You're saying we just don't have anybody to support it or to carry it?
No one carried it. No one agreed to carry it.
So we can't even get our own delegation to support it?
Well, let's just say we haven't. Let's not say we can't.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, I think that's what we're working towards, then, correct? If we're all in agreement that that should continue, working on.
Right, unless anybody feels differently, yes. But I'll work with the Madam Treasurer and then see, maybe she can, maybe we jointly can approach some of our delegates, our senator, to see.
To see, yeah. I think that would be the smart move.
Yes, great idea. I'm just making myself a quick note here on, okay. Authorized locality to require retrofitting of building containing one or more dwelling units to install and maintain smoke alarms. Required in new construction, not required in existing. Adventis reported that Senator Edwards' bill, he did introduce a bill on this one, and in the Local Government Committee of the Senate, it failed on a vote of seven yes and eight no. That's pretty close. So the Senate committee members from both parties urged the committee chairman to send a letter to the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development, fire code officials, asking them to do this in a regulatory manner. So I'm going to, again, follow up with Senator Edwards. So I'm going to, again, follow up with Senator Edwards' office on where that stands, and then we'll see whether we need to leave it in or if they can resolve this without passing legislation through a regulatory process. The bill to allow localities to limit smoking to designated areas in outdoor parks, no farther than 100 feet from recreation centers, outdoor playgrounds, and sports fields. Senator Edwards' bill was carried over in the committee. It will need to be reintroduced. I guess I need to ask Ms. Bateman at this point, if you can help us, if it's carried over, does that require reintroduction?
Well, for all practical purposes, yes, it does. The bills are carried over and they officially die if they're not dealt with by December 1, I believe it is.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think for purposes of your legislative program, that it should, if you want it to be reintroduced, you should put it back on your, you will need to put it back on your agenda and officially have it hopefully reintroduced.
Okay. Again, I'll follow up with the senator's office on that one. Madam Vice Mayor, you referred to this one earlier, the charter change to align with our statute on November municipal elections. I think you're right. We need to figure out how to make sure that our delegate and senator are active advocates for this one, and I've made that note here, and I will speak to both of them about that.
With Chairman, I think, excuse me, I think we passed that now, but I think we would be really remiss if we didn't send Senator Sproul a thank you for what he did, because I mean, he stood up really for, in that we were discussing the charter.
You know what? That's a great.
Yeah.
I will draft something up to send him, if that's all right.
Yeah, that's a good idea, Mayor. Go hard for that.
I watched that video on his addressing that on the floor of the Senate, and everything he said made such perfect sense, it was so logical, and so, I just... Vote was 21 to 18. I guess what amazed me the most about it is that Senator Edwards' party is still in the majority in the General Assembly, and how they got some of those, and I don't know who they were specifically, but how they got some of those to go along with voting something like this down is really a puzzle to me.
Well, if we didn't have any of our representatives there speaking on the behalf of the city of Roanoke, might have been helpful. They were, it was coming from Senator Sproul.
Yeah.
Had it came from Delegate Russell or Senator Edwards, it may have made some difference, and that's why I think it's important that we make sure they're engaged.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Mr. Spencer?
Yes, I just want to remind city council that the senator who did oppose this with redistricting is now within our district. So I, and there will be an election next year. I would think that perhaps that same senator will not oppose it this year, since he may be representing the entire city of Roanoke and would seek election from citizens and voters from the city of Roanoke.
I can tell you're right. He is, he is not yet, but as things stand right now, he will be representing the city of Roanoke, at least most of it.
If he were elected. It's contested vote. We have two senators in the combined district now.
I often say that if is the biggest two-letter word in the English language, and that's exactly right, so we'll see what happens with that. But you know what? I think I will give him a call as well. Just to see where we are. The land bank bills passed. I talked to Mr. Collins not too long ago, and our thought was that we should just let that play out for another year or so and see how well it's working, and then if we need to come back and ask for any tweaks, so to speak, to that legislation, we can do that. But for right now, I think that one can come off the list, as well as the reimagining of Katava Hospital. There was some funding approved for this process, and I really commend Delegate Russell for taking such a leadership role on this. And I think it's important to us in terms of Katava Hospital, but it's important to the Commonwealth of Virginia in terms of inpatient treatment for mental health issues across the board. So I think having this very comprehensive look at this time is very good. I will ask again, I think Senator Edwards introduced this, does he plan to continue or to reintroduce a bill to make the Virginia Museum of Transportation a state agency? Okay? We'll check with him on that one. We requested $10 million from the Commonwealth's American Rescue Act Plan for capital investment to support spinoff companies in the innovation corridor. The final state budget included up to $15,716, $716,344, the first year as a grant to the city of Roanoke. Again, I'll turn to Mr. Cowell, see if we need to continue that or...
We do not. So they exceeded, actually, our request, and certainly we have the match, you all know from the previous presentations regarding ARP, so at this point, the discussion's going on now with the Curleian Clinic, as well as Virginia Tech Foundation, to kind of start scheduling that work, if you will. So funding has been secured. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll come back next time to the items we had for K-12 education. Under public safety, the city had a policy position to support legislation to enable localities to enact ordinance that exceeds statewide standards with respect to sale, possession, storage, and carrying of firearms and ammunition. There were several attempts, according to Advanis, to roll back local control of gun issues, sort of moving in the opposite direction of what we're asking for, and they expect that those bills will be back in the 2023 General Assembly. So we're going to keep that in a policy statement. I don't know that we need to put anything specifically in terms of a legislative request, unless, I know you keep telling us that the Gun Violence Prevention Commission doesn't want to get involved in making legislative recommendations, but maybe you could, as a member of this committee, you could sort of share as we get through with that, okay? 599 funding did improve in the budget. It's still not where it needs to be, so I think that's something we need to continue to push on along with VML and our counterparts in local government across the Commonwealth. Mental health funding, again, was improved, and I think we need to continue, or request continuation of additional support for mental health treatment. Any further comments or questions from committee members on any of that? If not, we received six requests from staff for legislative. We're going to start off with Mr. Powell and Ms. Weitz and Phil with the legislation You have, I hope, the request in front of you, and I want to thank Mr. Cowell for having the staff get these to us so early this year. This is really helpful to have this so far in advance. Can you just sort of briefly explain to us what we're trying to accomplish with this one, and see if anybody has any questions?
Sure. It's certainly a very large ask, but in the context of climate change and preparing for our future, it is the way that we need to start thinking. So currently, you know, America has about 130 million residential and commercial buildings. Those buildings account for 35% of U.S. emissions, 40% of the nation's energy use, and 75% of electrical use. Yet, these buildings waste 30% of this energy. To meet climate change objectives, we must reduce carbon emissions to keep global climate system below the 1.5 to 2-degree mark. And in order to do that, cities will need to be pretty progressive, reducing emissions by 50% by 2030 and accomplishing net zero by 2050. Our buildings need to change. We need to develop, right now, our above-code, energy-efficient standards, make that, it's any building that exceeds energy efficiency by 30%, but that needs to be our new baseline. Any new building, any redeveloped building, needs to have solar-powered or alternative energy powering it. This needs to be our baseline, and that is the ask. It is a big ask. You know, we've got our local building codes, and then, you know, the international building codes, Virginia building codes, but I think it's something that we need to discuss.
Any questions or comments from committee members?
You know, I totally agree. I've been saying that for I don't know how many years, but I'm glad we're moving in that direction, and please let me know if there's anything I can do to help facilitate it.
Certainly.
And you referenced Virginia Code Section 58.1-3854. Can you recommend some specific language to amend that code section and come back to us before the next meeting with that?
Certainly.
What you think that the code of Virginia should say?
Okay.
Specifically, if you could, that would be very helpful to us.
Be glad to do that.
Mr. Chair, if she could work through our office, that way we can make sure that it gets in the proper format.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being with us. I think Mr. Chittum is going to address the next one, even though Mr. Webb's name is on these next, I guess, three, four? And this gets right at the heart of what we talked about a little earlier in terms of code compliance and so forth. And the first one has to do with requiring installation of smoke detectors in any building containing one or more dwelling units. Mr. Chittum?
Thank you, Mr. Westphal. Yeah, the first one on our list of legislative actions, this one, I believe that you mentioned we had in the General Assembly last year, I think we ought to continue to request this legislation. Seems like it was a little bit close last time, but this simply gives us the ability to install, to require the installation of smoke detectors in an existing building if they were built at a time when they were not required. Smoke alarms are cheap. They're very cheap, and they're very effective. There is no financial reason, other than stubbornness, to not require a landlord, in particular which we're interested in, to install these in a residential unit that was built in 1920. It's so cheap, it's so easy, it does not have to be hardwired. We're not sure what the background is and how this legislation got passed, because for years, we did have the ability to require this. And I think it was about four or five years ago that somebody was successful in lobbying to get it removed.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
So for years, we had this ability to make rental units safer with a $4 smoke, requiring a landlord to put a $4 smoke alarm in. This kind of gets my hackles up a little bit.
I can tell.
It's mind-boggling, why this is even under debate.
Well, and thank you for giving us some very specific language to amend Section 15.2-922A. I think that's very helpful, and we can just incorporate that right into our legislative request. If there's no objection from anybody on the committee, thank you. We'll go then to the next one, which is people trespassing and are squatting in vacant structures on private property. Mr. Chittum?
All right. So this one, just to summarize, we give the ability with the, we have a number of vacant structures out there that have been boarded up. We're not really sure who the owner is, or they may be an LLC or somebody we can't really hold responsible, who may not be working with us. And we do have issues with people pulling the boards off of the building and getting access and going in there and setting a campfire or something like that. They are big liabilities, and if we don't have the owner's bar trespass authorization, then we don't really have the ability to remove somebody from the property, because they could be there by authorization of the owner. So we would simply give us the ability to enforce trespass laws for somebody who's an uncooperative owner, which is, in the case of a vacant boarded-up house, probably the majority of what we're dealing with.
Yeah, and let me just briefly share with you a personal experience that kind of demonstrates how dangerous this type of thing can be. We had a family reunion, my mother's mother's side of the family. My grandmother was originally from Pike County, Kentucky. We had a reunion back there in June. My mother and all of her sisters actually were born and grew up, for the most part, in the next county over, which is Letcher County. And the day after the reunion, my sisters were still there, and they really wanted to go up and see grandmother's house. Well, I did not. I had been there a few years ago, and nobody's lived in the house for many years. The house was half-covered with kudzu, and to me, it was just depressing. But my wife kept telling me, you know, your sisters want you to go with them, you really... So I went. We got up there, the house was burned to the ground, unbeknownst to any of us previously. The next house, as you're facing, my grandparents' house, and the house to the left, was burned completely to the ground. Next to that was the Methodist Church, which is brick and cinder block construction. Fortunately, the roof or anything did not catch fire with that. But it was Sunday morning, so after the service was over with in the church, someone was able to explain to me that they believed that someone was squatting in the house between my grandparents' house and the church, and they believed that that individual was operating a meth lab. And one day, they heard a huge explosion. That house immediately went up in a ball of flames, and the next thing you know, the fire had spread over to my grandparents' house, which was a very basic wooden structure conducted in the very early 20th century, so it's well over 100 years old. And I'm sure it went up just like that. So dangerous things can happen. This is not just a matter of inconvenience or unsightly or whatever. Dangerous things can happen when we have no ability to keep people from breaking into abandoned boarded-up structure, whatever, and not being able to do anything about it. Okay? Thank you. We'll go to the next one on inoperable motor vehicles on private property.
All right. Mr. Westphal, this one, summary of that one is simply that traditionally, code enforcement personnel, unsworn code enforcement personnel, have had the ability since probably the 20th. since probably the mid-'90s to tag, identify vehicles, and give the owner notice of inoperable motor vehicles in a yard. And the police have handled everything on the street. So we've had that bifurcation of assignments throughout the years. Proposal here, we started to look at the ability for our code enforcement officers to also address those vehicles that are left on the street, abandoned on the street, that might be, you know, wrecked or just disabled for whatever reason and have it moved. When we started to do that, we discovered that only sworn personnel could do that for vehicles on the street. So we simply want to amend the legislation that would allow code enforcement officers, unsworn personnel, to cite those vehicles, give notice to the owner, and then when they're not removed, there's no response, we would call the tow truck operator, which we already have a relationship with.
Right.
To remove the vehicle and impound it and whatever they do with it after that.
You know, this is one of the things that I think many of our citizens are just shocked to find out.
Yeah.
That we're so limited in terms of what we can do in these situations. They see something like that, they think, "Well, why doesn't the city take care of that?" Madam Vice Mayor, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. I was just wondering, is there a limit that they can have in their yard that is inoperable? I mean, how many can they stack in there?
Zero. Zero. It's zero. They cannot have any.
And so, but they do, so is this going to help also to enforce that?
They do. We found thousands of them each year.
Oh, okay. Okay. Well, I just need to, I guess we need...
And so, for the most part, if we can, if a tow truck driver can get access to the vehicle, we will simply remove it. It is our -- all of our ordinances that relate to, that give us the ability to actually abate the violation with weeds or try, go clean it up, are quite effective. And sometimes there are situations where it's fenced in or something like that, and they cannot get access to that. Those become a little bit more problematic, and we have to go to court, but there is -- people cannot have one inoperative motor vehicle in their yard.
Okay. And maybe that's the case where it's fenced in, but I know, I mean, I'm thinking, if that's the case, why do we have so many? I mean, you can ride around in the city and you see them, two or three in the yard.
That is indeed puzzling, and if you do see those, call code enforcement, and we'll get on it because, as I said, we do have the ability to get that. Another game that this will address is sometimes they will move the inoperative motor vehicle from the yard out to the street, and then we got, and then somebody else has got to deal with it. And so we know people play those games, and then when the police get after them, they move it back into the yard, and we have to start all over again.
Oh, okay. Well, maybe that's cat and mouse game that's going on here.
That's a fun, well, and when it's one and the same, when the same person goes out there, they can identify, because sometimes we don't always see, we go look in the yard, and it's not there, but we don't, we might miss it if it's sitting on the street. It may, you know, sometimes inoperative motor vehicles are such that you can't tell if they're running or not. They may look fine, but they're inoperative. So this will help us shore up some of that, you know, miscommunication because it'll be the same person.
That's a good thing. Thank you.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor, did you have a...
Thank you, Mr. Chittam. I'm glad to hear that. That's the source of a number of calls I get about cars, and then sometimes it carries on over, "Why are you not moving it? If it was over on that side, you'd move it." You know what I mean when I say "that side"? So I'm saying that, so thank you for that. I think that's good information.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move then to the amendment to Section 15.2-1127 on vacant building registrations as civil penalty. Some additional language and some requests here to increase some of the dollar amounts.
So, Mr. Bestbitch, this legislation has been around for a long time, for probably well over a decade, and it has, and the amounts that they've put in there for the vacant building registration has not, so to speak, been worth our while at $400 in all the administrative work that it requires to keep up with these. Our proposal is to both increase the fee for vacant, and we're talking about unsafe structures and boarded-up structures that have been vacant for a year or more. We're not talking about something that's vacant because it's sold last week.
Right.
We're talking about nuisance structures and having an accountability for those, because we do have people who go to tax sales, acquire buildings, and sit on them and hoard buildings.
Right.
We call it hoarding, but they have multiple buildings and don't do anything with, and they always have, they may have good intentions someday of doing something with it, but we want to provide a little incentive for them to move ahead with their rehab project, and we think this would be important way to help them fix that house up or do something with the property that's positive. Remember, you know, I don't need to tell anybody, but, you know, the vacant house is sitting there, and it's sitting next to somebody else's house that has to live next to it. So we think any kind of legislation that will help us move those off the dime will be beneficial.
It definitely has a detrimental effect on the surrounding properties, so I think that's a very good one as well. Appreciate the work on that. And we have one more.
If I may.
Oh, yes.
Since we're done with the code enforcement-related ones, I do want to recognize that Dan Webb, who served the city for 28 years, retired at the beginning of this month, and he put all these together.
Yes.
So he couldn't be with us to present to you, but I did want to recognize his service, and...
Well, he could have come back. We would have let him.
I'm sure.
Well, we can give him a hand anyway. Let him know we gave him a hand.
Yeah. Okay, and the final one actually comes from you.
Yes, and this is Chris Chittam jousting at windmills. I have worked for many years to try to remove the requirement that we advertise rezonings and different things in the newspaper. They are incredibly expensive. They are rarely read, rarely do people find out about them, and they, because we have so many other ways. People can sign up for, you know, to get an email whenever there's a rezoning or rezoning appeals action or whatever it may be. The proposal here is a pretty elegant solution, is a way to substitute online or email notification as a substitute for that newspaper of general circulation, which has its own definition elsewhere in the code, but, you know, we're looking at internet, how many people have internet, and how many people get the, take the paper, and we're seeing where a case could have been made five, 10, 15, 20 years ago about the effectiveness and the reach of legal ads online versus in a newspaper, and it's not worth it. And again, we spend tens of thousands of dollars, tens of thousands of dollars, to publish notifications that few people read. And what's more, the parameters are very specific, very, very specific, for when things run in the paper. And so, a lot of staff time is spent making sure that we adhere to those strict timelines. So there's also a lot of room for error and a lot of stress that is induced by frustration because we know that nobody reads it. We don't, I've been, I've been working for cities since 1989, and I've never run across anybody who learned about a rezoning from the newspaper.
Well...
And I think the argument has been, this always also gets my hackles up, but the arguments have been that it's, you know, trying to let everybody know, "Well, you know..." They can do that. They can still give people notice. They don't have to get us to pay them $12,000 to run an ad.
And I think it doesn't happen often, but when you talk about the technical meeting of the deadlines and advanced notice and so forth, every once in a while, we run into that problem. We have to reschedule something because the notice didn't get printed, and I think in many instances, it wasn't our fault, it was somebody on the newspaper that just didn't get it in there, didn't get it printed, whatever. But again, I'll just share from personal experience. My wife and I downsized to a condo a little over five and a half years ago. 24 units in our building. When we moved there, there were seven apartments that received the printed newspaper every day. Now, there's one. I read the newspaper online every day because it's got so expensive to get the printed copy. You can sign up to read it online, it's much, much less expensive. And also, I think it's much less expensive to put one of the ads in on the webpage version. You know, they've got all these pop-up ads. Every time you go to a different page, there's some ad that pops up. Well, that might inform a lot more people about something like this than actually the way that it is now, because as you say, nobody reads them. Nobody reads it, so...
I think it's actually more cost-effective to take out a commercial ad, if I recall correctly, in the newspaper than it is to run in the legal notices.
A legal notice. They charge more for a legal notice.
Yeah.
Interesting, simply because they know they got you.
They can, I mean, they could literally charge whatever they want to.
Well, sure.
Because we have...
You're required to do it, so, you know, you got to pay whatever they want to charge.
And when I say $10,000 to $12,000, I am not exaggerating.
Just for one?
The planning department...
Just for one?
Yeah, just for one ad.
Yeah.
We have had, I mean, that's our, that's what we charge, that's what we put in our budget for the annual zoning amendments.
Right.
To run the legal ad.
Thank you. Thank you for all of that, Mr. Chittam, and for all you have done and continue to do for our city. So the next item on the agenda is a review of any requests for consideration from committee members. Does anybody have anything else that we have not talked about that you think we should I don't see any hands going up, so... So let me just say, and I'll emphasize this a little bit before we adjourn, but if there's anything, we need to get it together, okay? We did receive a request from Barbara Durk, having to do with traffic safety initiatives and so forth. I forwarded that to you earlier today, and I've also forwarded it to the city manager and asked him to have staff review those and see whether those are any of the things that we should incorporate into our package. So we'll, again, defer that until the next meeting. Advanus also supplied us with a look ahead to the 2023 session, and so I'd like for Laura and Kathy, if you would take the opportunity at this point to share any comments that you think will be helpful to us at this point, we would greatly appreciate that.
Okay, great. Happy to do that, and thank you for the opportunity. So there is a calendar of events that hard and fast deadlines times with the General Assembly that we think will...
We're having a little trouble, we're having a little trouble hearing you, Laura.
Okay, is that better?
That's much better. Thank you.
Okay, great. I think that the calendar in front of you has some hard and fast deadlines that we know now with the General Assembly for when legislative requests need to get in. I would just, we just want to preface that what we're seeing is a General Assembly that tends to be very year-round and focused, and I feel like this year, things are stepped up even more and even sooner in terms of schedule. As you can see, pre-filing of legislation has already begun, and we know that they, both chambers are going to have bill limits, and I think it's 35 bills in the Senate, excuse me, Kathy said 25,5 bills in the Senate, and we understand 15 in the House of Delegates per member. So that's going to inform how, you know, what legislation they take on, and the sooner you can get with a patron, you know, the better. So basically, December 1 is the deadline for getting the bills in to be drafted, and I would say budget amendments, the sooner, you know, those are together, the better, and get on the dance card, if you will, for your members. So I won't go through all those dates, but I think December 1 is a key date, and I, we layered in your council meetings just to give you an idea of when, you know, approvals and whatnot would be most opportune. But we're very focused on that December 1 deadline for getting drafts in, and ideally would be great to get them in, you know, even sooner.
Yeah, that's the one date, Laura, that I circled on the timeline that you sent us. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would say even that is really, really, would be very late.
Yes.
That's the absolute deadline, but in order to submit a draft, you have to have a member, number one, agree to submit the draft. That doesn't necessarily mean they're going to patron the legislation, but that is, that's the first step. So the sooner, the sooner we can help you, you know, talk with your delegation and would-be members, we're happy to do so. I know on the smoke alarm bill, we, I drafted a letter for the chairman of that committee to send to the building code officials, official at Department of Housing and Community Development, and because of the holiday, we're waiting to hear how that was received. We were hoping that they could do it administratively and not be compelled to have to do it through legislation, and that was the message of what we heard the senator saying last session. So we'll update you on that to see if that, hopefully, you don't need to make that request again, and hopefully, the letter will have done it, but stay tuned, and we'll let you know on that. Several of the, several of the pieces of legislation that you're looking at, we would just say have applicability and impact beyond the city of Reno to all other local governments. So I think a lot of times, we hear legislators say, "What's the BML position? What's the BACO position?" So we will, you know, any input that you have into the BML and BACO or BML legislative policy committee process on these issues would be greatly, would be of great assistance, actually, because, I mean, I think our patrons would say, you know, "Where are they on these bills?" But we could definitely help you with that and look forward to doing that. And that's all we have, unless there are further questions of us.
Madam Vice Mayor.
Yes, I just want to make sure. Ms. Bateman, could you just clarify? You said the Senate bill limit was 25 or 35, because we have written here 35.
Yeah, what was on the, what was on the deadline you sent us says 35.
35.
I, yeah, we, I'm going to assume it's 25. The Rules Committee of the Senate actually meets tomorrow, and we will have that number conclusively. Kathy tells me it's 25 is what's under consideration, and I'm not sure if, when I was typing this, it was just a typo or what, but let's assume it's 25, and if it's different, we will let you know.
Okay. Yeah, you let us know tomorrow, after that meeting anyway. Okay? As she said, if anybody has any further questions for Advanus or... As she said, if anybody has any further questions for AdVantis or wants to discuss any of that. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, I think the city manager was, you're not going to have?
No, it was just the, I was going to actually mention something that Chris actually mentioned in his last point. So no, he covered it.
So you already took care of that?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Other business is basically to announce that we really need to wrap everything up based on what we just heard in the next two meetings. So our next meeting is October 6, which is a Thursday. As usual, the first meeting in October moved to accommodate the schedule for VML. And then the first Monday in November is November 7. So we will plan to meet on those two dates, October 6, November 7, and conclude our program officially adopted as a committee and be ready to recommend to the council our program on November 11. Excuse me, 11/7, November 7. So I assume that would probably mean on the 21st, it will be on the agenda for council to approve. And that means we will continue to invite the legislators for the first meeting in December, which is December 5, to discuss all of this with them and hear any of their input. But I think, to me, telling each member of the House of Delegates that you can only introduce 15 bills. Yeah, that's, I don't know.
They have to make some tough decisions.
So I think that unless anybody has any better ideas, we really need to stick to that schedule and have, kind of to a serious discussion about education and any of the rest of these issues we've talked about on October 6, and then be prepared to finalize everything on November 7, okay?
Okay.
So if you haven't done it already, please review all this material. They've been very good about putting together pretty comprehensive information. And we really need everybody to take a good look at that and be prepared to get into it on October 6. And if there's nothing further, Mr. Spencer?
Just real quickly, since we are on that schedule, public hearings required for charter changes. So if it's okay with council for that charter change that we talked about moving the election, it's housekeeping, still need to go through the legal process. You might see that sooner rather than later.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea, you know. Like, it's too bad we can't just say, oh, we already did that. We had a public hearing on it, but that's not the way it works.
Of course, the cheeky side of me wants to see if Senator Suterline wants to sponsor that particular charter.
Well, I said I would give him a call, but I'm not sure. I have to think about whether I want to include that into the conversation. Maybe I do.
He'll be invited, right?
Maybe, yes, he will. He always has been, and he's been very good about coming.
So it's more than clarification. You don't want the representatives here until December?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, December 5, I think it is, whatever that first Monday is, I think it's December 5. So, nothing further? Our committee meeting is adjourned, and Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Best Pitch. Let's take a 10-minute break, and we'll come back and reconvene and start with our briefing. Let's take a 10-minute break, and we'll come back and reconvene and start with our briefing. Okay, we're going to continue, reconvene in a regular session. And at this time, I'm going to call on our city manager to introduce the briefings.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Actually, this particular briefing is on a series of code amendments that, as our practice has been in the past, city attorney will be reviewing these with you as the draft with the intent of making any adjustments and bringing them back for action at a subsequent meeting. And with that, city attorney's item.
Good morning, Mayor, members of city council.
Good morning.
We have three little kids. They got his DNA and everything. It's all high, you can't get out of that. It's a shame, though, she's got two or three little kids. Do your job, man, do your job.
I pretty much stopped the trail. I don't do that over there with the homeless. I just go up and down, uh, Hough Lane Park.
Be careful in your mind, especially, you're an officer, you're a big officer, man. You never know what enemies we've got lurking around here.
You never know. I told you I got home from the police again, right? The police are too much. I'm getting off of there. See, after going back there, over there by the land down exercise, Jennifer taught me to do that, she's real good, but isn't that good? So I didn't get out of there when it's over. He says, well, we have to hold you to a high standard. I said, thank you, officer, I appreciate it. I wanted to tell him. I was embarrassed, really, but...
Sorry. You have to be careful.
He better be, I guess he better be. Oh, they keep waiting on that tape, bro. I've got a lot going on. I said, I've got a lot going on. I said, I've got a lot going on. I don't really have a lot. But I talked to Patience about doing the, you know, about the, I talked to Patience about pay discrepancy. She worried because, you know, we're driving for a lot, human resources and stuff. So she's saying she might not be able to do it either. But I, I, I thought, she said, we're going, we're going to talk about it. This ain't talked today because I told her I was busy. We're going to talk about it. Because I told her, I don't see how, what it is. I'm going to have to figure out somebody else, but it will not do that every day that we're talking about. It will not.
Show them off.
Even after we have run through neighborhood choice.
Day and everything, yep.
I don't know what that, take a red, red slider one is all about, but I got it on my calendar. That's hard because, you know, I don't know. What's a copy? They say no. They say no. Well, they said no. Well, they said no. That's what I'm saying. I didn't ask them. I just want them to know. That's okay. But you can't say that anybody...
Okay, we're going to continue, reconvene in a regular session. And at this time, I'm going to call on our city manager to introduce the briefings.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Actually, this particular briefing is on a series of code amendments that, as our practice has been in the past, city attorney will be reviewing these with you as the draft with the intent of making any adjustments and bringing them back for action at a subsequent meeting. And with that, city attorney's item.
Good morning, Mayor, members of city council.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have three items that are mainly housekeeping, and I'll go through each of them separately. The first one is an amendment to the Youth Services Board dealing with the makeup, and I will rely greatly on Ms. Price as we move forward through this. We've tried to make amendments that are going to change from 15 to 17 members, as well as give a little greater flexibility. Note on there that you can have two or more. You can have one or more members of council, and that you can also, we've increased the number of at-large appointments. That way, if a certain council member is no longer a council member, we don't need to come back and do a reappointment. It still meets up with the makeup of the Youth Services Board. Now, this is under Chapter 17?
Yeah, I think I got two of the same one somehow.
Okay.
We're missing one.
We're missing one, too, okay. So, anyway, I don't have what you're discussing now. Do you all have?
Oh, we have, yeah.
I just don't...
And it's my intent to have these go out to everyone, both the public and council, ahead of time so that this is truly a review with an opportunity for you to provide, give any input or changes that you might have to these proposed or draft ordinances. So I'm here to answer any questions on that.
I just want to thank you, Mr. Spencer, for helping us to get this cleaned up and so that we can continue to move forward and be in compliance.
Yes, it was a group effort. Members of the Youth Services Board, as well as the Clerk's Office, worked on this. We also took out some language that could cause some potential issues with one of the student members if they turned 18 in April and all of a sudden couldn't serve. So we took out the age requirement, which seemed to make sense. And then we clarified the start and finish date. That helps with both schools and the Clerk's Office ensuring that we have those student members appointed properly.
And thanks also to Ms. O'Brien for her input. And like you said, you know, we ran this by our Youth Services Board, the Clerk's Office, so kudos to everyone who has worked so hard on getting this language cleaned up. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions on that? And if you have any questions in between, what we intend to do is, of course, bring back this back next council meeting for action. The next one is, again, a little bit of cleanup. It's dealing with the land book. As part of our agreement with our Commissioner of Revenue, the performance agreement that allows enhanced services from our Commissioner of Revenue, and then as a result of those enhanced services in collecting the revenue, we do indeed give enhanced payments in working with our Director of Real Estate Valuation. There was a discussion to move the land book over to the Director of Valuation. That was part of the agreement. I really want to appreciate the work that we've gotten from our Commissioner of Revenue. It's been a great relationship from my observations. Also, he worked, continued to, even though we had that agreement, continued to work on the land book until it needed to be certified in August, and he undertook that, and then we came forward with the amendment now so that we could have a nice, smooth transition. So what this does is this just transfers the control of the land book from the Commissioner of Revenue over to Real Estate Valuation, since they're dealing constantly with that. And then we'll move that forward on that process. Any questions or if anything that you want to add, Ryan?
That very well sums up.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Okay. And then the final one is also housekeeping. This is, again, to take, not that it happens that often, but when it comes to exemptions for elderly and disabled persons, the application can be received currently on June 30th to become effective July 1st. So someone could come into the office at 4:00 on June 30th, and everyone has to scramble within that last hour to get it. So all we're asking is move the deadline to May 31st so that we'll have the full 30 days so that we're not putting the staff in that type of position. We'll advertise and make sure that we inform our citizens of the new deadline, but that's the main change on this. David Collins in my office has worked with the Commissioner of Revenue's office on this particular change, and I appreciate his work and effort in getting that done. Anything, Ryan, you can add to this?
So this in particular is to, with the transfer of...
Of the land book.
The land book to the Real Estate Valuation. We want to ensure that all applications for the disabled and elderly tax relief process are properly processed and gotten to Real Estate Valuation with enough time for them to make any adjustments to the land book so there's no errors that could occur in the process. We want to make a clean and good process for all parties involved.
All right, anybody got anything?
Any questions?
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And Fox has short, so I guess I finished under 5:00.
That concludes the briefing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council will stand in recess for a series of closed meeting, and we'll reconvene at 2:00 PM. Thank you.
Enforced. And so many tipped workers in this country earn an incredibly low minimum wage, and that's been the case, that subminimum wage for tip workers has been there since the mid-'90s. And the amount hasn't been increased since that time.
We're still hearing from some of you. Melanie tweets, anyone who has ever had to work in the fast food industry at all knows how stressful it is on the body and mind. Root customers, constant standing...